Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Candidate Forum for the November 2nd General Election. This is the forum for two sets of candidates running for Dearborn Heights City Council. My name is Jennifer Oliver and I am the President of the Local League. This program is presented and produced as a public service by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan national organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League never supports or opposes candidates or political parties. Membership is open to everyone aged 16 years or older. For additional information on today's candidates, please visit the League's online voter guide at vote411.org or download a printable copy of the League's voter guide from our website, Limited numbers of print copies of the voter guide will be available at clerks offices and libraries in Dearborn Heights. Normally, we would hold a live, in-person public forum. However, due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, tonight's forum is being held virtually. We and the candidates are interacting tonight through the Zoom platform, and the recording that you are watching will be released in its entirety. The League of Women Voters wants every eligible voter to inform themselves and vote in the November 2nd election. Although all local precincts will be open on election day, please contact your city clerk's office for an absentee ballot if you prefer that option. There are several ways to apply for an absentee ballot, and all voters are eligible to vote absentee. You can even apply for, receive, and complete an absentee ballot at the clerk's office right up until the day before the election. For more information, go to vote411.org or contact the city clerk. If you aren't sure whether or not you are registered to vote or whether your absentee ballot has been issued or recorded, please visit the Michigan Voter Information Center at mi.gov/vote. Now, I am delighted to introduce the moderator of tonight's forum, Lorelei Mooneyz, a member of the League of Women Voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights. Lorelei?
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, September 27th, 2021. We are recording this program in its entirety via the Zoom platform. As always, the League of Women Voters is not responsible for the views expressed by the candidates. With us tonight are some of the candidates in the two Dearborn Heights City Council races, a full four-year term and a partial two-year term. The candidates have agreed to the following plans. The candidates will speak in alphabetical order within their race. Thereafter, the order of responses will be rotated. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and one minute to answer each question. We will end with each candidate having two minutes to make a final statement. Today's timekeeper, Leslie Winless, will say stop to notify the candidate when their time expires. The questions include both those developed by the League and those solicited from the community prior to the forum. All questions have been screened to prevent duplication, personal attacks, and to ensure that questions address all the candidates. Unfortunately, time will not allow for all questions to be asked, and we encourage you to contact the candidates directly if your question is not answered. Contact information is available online at vote411.org. We invited all the candidates from the Dearborn Heights City Council races to join us tonight. Six candidate names will be on the November 2nd general election ballot for the four-year, full-term Dearborn Heights City Council race. You may vote for up to four candidates in this race. Their names in alphabetical order are: Zoher Abdalhaq, Hassan M. Ahmad, Nancy Brier, Robert Conston, Rachel LaPointe, and Tom Wenzel. Two candidate names will be on the November 2nd general election ballot for the two-year partial term Dearborn Heights City Council race. You may vote for one. Their names in alphabetical order are: Ned Apigian and Mo Baydoun. The candidates have been asked to make a one-minute opening statement, and we will begin with Mr. Abdalhaq.
My name is Zoher Abdalhaq. I bought my house in Dearborn Heights when I returned to...
Oops, you're muted, Zoher.
Sorry. My name is Abdalhaq, and I bought my house in 1992 in Dearborn Heights. And that is my main residence. By education, I am an electrical engineer. And I have worked on the zoning board for five years in the city of Dearborn Heights. And on the housing commission, I chaired it for one year. And I have been attending the city council continuously for the last 16 or 17 years approximately. I have deep knowledge of the budget of all the departments in the city, and I have excellent relation with my colleagues on the city council and with the administration, the mayor, and his staff. And I am hoping that I can make a difference in the life of our residents because Dearborn Heights to me is home. And if I cannot improve my home, then I shouldn't be anywhere else.
Thank you. Ms. Brier?
Okay, first of all, I also am a long-term resident, and I've lived in both parts of the city. And the thing that I'm very passionate about is to establish transparency between the city officials and the residents. And I promise to aggressively work toward prompt trash pickup, fairness with taxes and water bills, and neighborhood safety. And I want to stay within a time, so I think I'm going to quit.
Thank you. Mr. Conston?
Thank you. My name is Bob Conston, and I'm running for reelection to the Dearborn Heights City Council. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for setting up this candidate forum and for all they do informing voters. I'm a lifelong resident of Dearborn Heights. I hold a bachelor's degree from the University of Michigan and a Juris Doctor degree. I have worked as an attorney in private practice with the Law Office of Rockenborgel, PC, on Ford Road in Dearborn Heights. I previously served as the 16th District State Representative. I had 100% perfect attendance and voting record. I never missed a vote. Four bills that I authored were passed and signed into law. I have many years experiencing balanced budgets, both as a city councilman and as a state representative. With my extensive background...
Thank you. Mrs. LaPointe?
Hello, I'm Rachel LaPointe, and I am so excited to be here tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I've always loved and appreciated everything that the League does. Vote 411 has always been my go-to before every election. And I really just hope all of our residents take advantage of that. I am a third-generation Dearborn Heights resident, and I have spent many years helping in different organizations, my church. I was the PTO president at my kid's school, all sorts of stuff like that. So for me, it's really about coming and giving back to my community and helping to make it an amazing city for my kids to live in and for all the kids and for all the residents. And that's why I'm running for city council. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian?
I was born in Niagara Falls, New York, where I graduated from the Trump Vocational Technical High School in the pre-engineering four-year program in technical drafted. After graduation, I joined the Marines. After my active service, I moved to Dearborn where I attended the Henry Ford Community College, eventually earning two associate's degrees, one in liberal arts and one in science. Then I earned my bachelor's degree of architecture from the University of Detroit in 1966 and a master's degree in urban planning from Wayne State University in 1969. I am married to my wife...
Ten seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought tell me to stop.
Yeah.
Married to my wife, Aroxy, for 57 years, and I reside in the same house for the last 50 years in Dearborn Heights in the Military Hills subdivision in the Fairlane School District.
Thank you. Mr. Baydoun?
Hey, guys, thank you so much. My name is Mo Baydoun, and I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for setting this up, and thank you to all the participants today and for all the residents at home that are watching. My name is Mo Baydoun, and since joining the Dearborn Heights City Council, I brought a hands-on leadership style to the role. You may have seen me as I rode along on our snow plows during my first week in office to help ensure that the roads were properly plowed. Perhaps you've partnered with me to upgrading the bathrooms at the Eaton Center or fixing the gymnasium at the Richard A. Young Center. Since I've been on council, I've brought on a hands-on type of leadership. I believe that I am going to continue to holding our contractors accountable. We know the issues that are happening in the city of Dearborn Heights, like GFL and its garbage delays, or the Ecorse Creek and the flooding and the issue. I'm asking the residents at home to vote for me on November 2nd. I'm a small business owner in the city of Dearborn Heights. I'm married to Dr. Leila Baydoun, and I have a beautiful newborn son at home and a beautiful little toy putative dog named Sophie. Thank you.
Thank you. Hassan M. Ahmad is unable to join us tonight due to work obligation, but has submitted a written statement, which I will read now. Good evening. My name is Hassan Ahmad, husband, proud father, and an associate real estate broker with Remax Lending Edge in Dearborn Heights. I also have a degree in engineering with an MBA. I'm committed to service work, and I'm passionate about helping organizations fulfill their vision and work to build stronger, healthier, and more vibrant communities. When elected, I will represent the entire city and its residents, and I'm committed to ensuring all their voices and concerns are heard, acknowledged, and addressed. When elected, I will work to tackle the issues that matter most to you, to promote a small-business-friendly environment in Dearborn Heights and boost economic development, fund and improve our city's strong public safety services and increase enforcement on reckless driving and speeding, maximize your taxpayer dollars, and maintain fiscal responsibility and government transparency, ensure our parks and recreation spaces are safe and clean, and integrate the latest technology to streamline... Tom Wenzel is unable to join us tonight, but has submitted a written statement, which I will now read. Hi, my name is Tom Wenzel. I am running for reelection to my seat on the Dearborn Heights City Council, which I've held for the past four years. I am 64 years old, a lifelong resident at the south end of Dearborn Heights. I've spent my entire life from age 14 serving the residents of Dearborn Heights. I've been married to my beautiful wife, Debbie, for 46 years. We've raised three wonderful children, Tom Jr., Stacy, Jamie, here in Dearborn Heights. We are now raising Jamie's five children, ages four, six, eight, nine, and 13, after her death in 2017. I know the struggles of being a senior citizen on a fixed income and the challenges of young parents raising a young family. My greatest endorsement was the endorsements I received from over 4,000 voters in my last election. A vote for me is a vote for families, for fire and police, for senior citizens, for flood victims. A vote for me is a vote for you. Thank you. Now, we will begin with the questions. All candidates will be given one minute to answer each question. We'll begin with Ms. Brier. The first question is: How do you plan to maintain city services, and what are your priorities in this area?
Okay, I hope to improve upon what we've already started in city services and enhance those that need additional work. I'm especially concerned about our ordinance department. I want us to follow through on those plans that are already intact and make sure we enforce the difficulties there. With GFL, I hope that we have someone new come January because it's not working out. That's the garbage collection. The other things I want to do are work with the seniors at both centers and make sure they have, well, into their senior, very senior years, a good place to go and people to be with. Let's see, what else do we have? We also have to... Oh, and I am on the Ecorse Creek Commission.
Ten seconds.
Okay, I was appointed by the previous mayor for the Women's Commission and the Van Buren Corridor, so I work in that capacity as well.
Thank you. Mr. Conston?
Thank you. I think, of course, our good police services, good, strong fire protection, and our rescue squad. We've implemented a third squad to help our growing and aging population in Dearborn Heights. Good services for our seniors and good parks and recreation programs for our youth especially. Those are the services that I hope to strengthen if I continue as a member of the city council.
Thank you. Mrs. LaPointe?
Could you repeat the question?
Yes.
Thanks.
How do you plan to maintain city services, and what are your priorities in this area?
Okay, so as far as maintaining our services, I think we have a good baseline to start with. We've got great police and fire, and we've got those great basics in place. And I am so impressed by our Parks Department. The last few months, all the awesome activities going on, the concerts. There's a lot of improvements being made to our buildings, our infrastructure. So what we need to do now is think about how we need to move forward. So for me, the priority is really looking at our budget and saying, okay, what can we adjust? What is unnecessary? Where do we have things that we need to plug in and fill in little holes in the services so that we can really make the city an amazing place? Improving the parks would be a first priority for me. As a mom of four kids, I would love to be able to send them to parks and hang out there, but it's hard when there's not a bathroom there. So things like making sure that we have all the amenities that make this a destination to live would be my top thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian?
Yes, the question presumes there's something wrong with services. Our fire and police are excellent, I believe, but I have two priorities. The priorities of garbage collection. I think that the city of Dearborn Heights should have the same rules Bloomfield Hills does. Our present rules, as what's happening in garbage services in my neighborhood, it's Thursday, but they come on Thursday and they leave one, they come on Friday, then they come on Saturday and pick up the leaves. My biggest concern is the tree ordinance in Dearborn Heights. We're cutting down trees in... I don't know what to say, as if it was the thing to do. And we're supposed to be the Arbor Series.
Ten seconds.
Unfortunately, I want to change that ordinance into the one I've proposed previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baydoun?
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And to me, like a lot of the colleagues today that have spoken up, I think the most important is to continue to strengthen our police and fire with a growing and aging community, being assured that we're properly adequate with proper fire department equipment and our EMS trucks, but also making sure that we're staying advanced with our police equipment, making sure that the body cams are there for the public safety and the safety of our police officers. I also believe that if there's anything that we can do to strengthen up, I know keeping our street sweeps and helping out DPWs that we're getting more adequate material trucks so that we can make sure that the trees are properly being cleaned up, so they're being trimmed. If there are any trees that need to be cut up, we can reach out to DPW. They can get out there real quick. And then also for our seniors, just making sure that we have things like the Eaton Center, the bathrooms are up, and we're equipped for them so that they can go in there and people can use the restroom using a wheelchair. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Abdalhaq? Go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. First, thank you for inviting me to this forum. And second, my priority are three things: police, fire, and DPW. Those are the three important things for any resident who is going to come to our city. And beside that, I would like always to support the police and fire with all what they need to do their job. That is a priority for me. And I need to make sure that we go after grants. Previously, we never went after lots of millions of dollars in grants. I like to support that department so we can have more money come into the city and we can give this money priority, like fixing the roads, the cleaning, the parks, and additional services. Thank you.
All right, the second question will first go to Mr. Conston. And the question is: How will you work to ensure that city resources and services are accessible to and inclusive of all city residents?
To make sure our services are advertised, accessible. People know when their trash is going to be picked up, how to make a complaint or contact the police, the fire department. Our disabled population is becoming more and more mobile, thank goodness. And I think our parks especially need to be equipped for those people that are disabled that want to enjoy them. Making our city buildings all wheelchair accessible. One good thing is having the lockbox on a person's house so if the police come out or the fire, the rescue squad, they can get into the house quickly and not have to break the door down. So I think at the minimum, all our city buildings being ADA compliant and having some facilities for handicapped residents in our city parks. Thank you.
Mrs. LaPointe?
This is an excellent question. As someone who has dealt with chronic pain issues that have impacted my mobility even as a young person, accessibility is incredibly important. All of our buildings absolutely need to be updated to be sure that they are ADA compliant, but not just buildings. Some things like tech, people don't always think of that. Our website is not entirely compliant with some of the accessibility factors. Like if someone isn't able to read, if they're blind, they need to be able to use a website reader. And those things are little things that really make a difference. Another one that has really impacted me as a mom that has lots of little kids at home, it's hard to listen to city council meetings on YouTube sometimes. And closed captioning on all of our city videos is absolutely a necessary accessibility element that we need to make sure is happening, among many other things.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian?
Yes, thank you. The assumption is this question needs a technological answer. Go on the internet, ask everybody a question. But actually, the city does a pretty good job of that now. You see this magazine that says today, "Any question you humanly possibly have about the city is in that book, that magazine." It is mailed to everybody's house, and I didn't write it. To think a very simple question is, everybody has this book in your house. If you have a question, don't call a lawyer. Open up this book and every telephone number you need and every website you need to access is there. I really can't have a more interesting answer to that question than what I just told you.
Thank you. Mr. Baydoun?
Thank you so much, guys. Awesome question. So since joining the Dearborn Heights City Council, January of 2021, one of the things that I've been working hand-in-hand with our treasurer, Lisa Exclayton, who was recently on the city council, is now our treasurer, is to get and bring kiosses to City Hall, have them at our local grocery stores so that it's more accessible for our residents to be able to pay their taxes to this kiosk, to be able to pay your water bill online. And being more, you know, just teaching some of our City Hall employees to be a little bit more tech-savvy in updating our website so that somebody can go in there, find out what they need, which they're doing a great job right now. But if we can become a little bit more tech-savvy on there, paying a water bill online, being able to pay your taxes online, and any bills that need to be, if you want to order a new trash bin, not having to go into City Hall, but being able to go online, order the trash bin, and have it melt to your home. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Abdalhaq?
Thank you. My priority is to bring the city up to the 21st century. It has been ignored for a long time, and I think we do have lots of money in the city, especially from the PEC, Public Education and Government, which has over $1.2 million. I would like to use that to make the public aware of everything through, basically, Facebook, through every media possible, and they can participate in it. Then to make all the payment and applications for building and for inspections or any other thing are available online. Plus, all the buildings should be accessible, ADA compliant. The money is available, and the city council should be the one who will, basically, make this money available.
Thank you. Ms. Brier?
Yes, in addition to the ADA improvements, I especially like the improvement of the restroom at the Eaton Center. It's very badly needed, and I will be personally using that. And all the other ADA things that we've been improving through the city, we should continue. And I want to piggyback on what Ned had to say because he stole my thunder, that Today Book is a good way to reach seniors in particular who may not have the accessibility to a computer, know how to get on a website, or follow through in Zoom meetings and things of that nature. This is very difficult for them to find. So that would be something we should very much continue. And as Ned expressed, you have phone numbers, you have people to contact, and you have websites if you have accessibility to do so. Thank you very much.
All right, our third question will go first to Mrs. LaPointe, and it is: Do you see a need to refine ordinances intended to eliminate blight? Why or why not?
Well, I think all of our ordinances need to be looked at and refined. I know we talk a lot about the charter and reviewing that and refining that, but the ordinances are also just, there's a lot of them, and there's a lot of things repeating, and it really does need to be looked at. Regarding blight specifically, I think we need to look at not just the ordinances, but how the process of enforcing the ordinances occurs. A lot of the issues right now have to do with people needing help. If someone is handicapped and can't mow their lawn, and then ordinance comes by and issues a warning, if they can't get their lawn mowed because they can't go out and do it, we need to be providing a list of, you know, volunteers that need to earn service hours for, you know, their confirmation class or whatever it is. So I think we don't just need to look at the ordinances, but we need to look at how we're helping people to abide by the ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Apigian?
Would you repeat the question? There was a part of it I didn't understand, something about mice. Would you repeat the question? There was a part of it I didn't understand, something about mice exclusive?
Let me try to read it more clearly. Do you see a need to refine ordinances intended to eliminate blight? Why or why not?
Absolutely. There's many things that we could do. The question was, what's the mechanism? Let's say you call somebody, how do you know where you are on the list? There's many people who think they can call an elected official, and that gets him ahead of the list. It shouldn't. It's not the it's not the place of elected officials to interject with department heads and get your request ahead of somebody else's. There's just too many things I got to say about that, but each one of these ordinances need a mechanism of how you follow through. That's what I see. It's a giant problem. I called last week. Where is my concern? Is it hours away, days away, or weeks away? For example, we're worried about grass being six inches tall. I like my grass tall. But we don't say anything about wild bushes in people's houses. My concern is we need a mechanism of know-how our concern is.
Thank you. Mr. Baydun.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yes. Do you see a need to refine ordinances intended to eliminate blight? Why or why not?
Thank you so much for repeating the question. And yes, I definitely do see. So, I mean, as we know, Dearborn Heights and many different parts of the neighborhoods have neighbors that don't cut their grass, that don't trim their bushes, and they're not upkeeping with their homes. Or we're having a lot of renters that are living, you know, within our neighbors, and that are not upgrading their homes. And so it's unfortunate that some of the residents will reach out to the elected officials who will ask to, hey, can you, you know, can you send this over? And, you know, like myself, I'll answer a phone and they'll say, hey, my neighbor hasn't cut their grass. It's extremely long. And what we are not allowed to have the ordinance do is actually ticket them. You can give them a warning, and then we send out a contract that it will go out and cut the grass. Once ordinance, once we can change the charter, allowing ordinance to be able to go and issue a ticket, I think it's going to be a lot easier for them to be able to issue the ticket and saying, hey, you know what? I'm sorry you didn't cut your grass. That saves the city money, and it saves the taxpayer some money as well. Thank you.
Mr. Abdallah.
Thank you again. The blights caused the property value in any city, in any neighborhood to go down. And we should be very strict about enforcing the ordinances which we have. And we should support the ordinance department because they are shorthanded with more people, and we should, as city council members, we should find the money to hire more people so we can have larger enforcement. And we have to train those people who go and give the notices or give the tickets to these people. Then we have to push them through the court system so they don't sit for three or four months before they go in front of a judge. So I am with refining our ordinances which we have already, and I am with strictly enforcing those ordinances, because I like to keep the property value in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Pryor.
Yes, it's hard going toward the end. Everybody said most everything. But I do think we definitely need to follow up and those things we do have on the books, and we do have to get enforcement. We should follow through. And as Mo said, I wanted to bring up the fact that with the landlords, they should be made to help maintain their own properties if their tenants will not do so. There should be maybe a warning, but definitely ticketing with enforcement and fines attached. Thank you.
Mr. Constant.
Thank you. Yes, I think our ordinances have to be timely, updated, and refined. An example would be ordinances regarding feeding animals that end up feeding our rat population, not allowing dog droppings to remain on the ground too long, and also add to the rat problem. I think also we should have escalating fines. So if the homeowner properly cleans the property up, great. And if not, and the ordinance officer has to go back out, the fine should escalate. And the end result should be that the city would clean the property up and the homeowner would rebuild. But yes, I think our ordinances always need to be looked at and kept up to date.
Thank you. So the next question will first go to Mr. Pekian, and it is, "Speeding and other traffic violations are an ongoing problem. What actions would you take to make our neighborhood streets safer?"
Well, you could do what I did. I called the police department, brought them to my neighborhood, and I pointed out to them, and we can do this. Everybody could do this. We have some signs that are ridiculous. We have signs that are where they should, don't have to be, and we're missing signs where they should be. And if you live as close, I don't live that close to Telegraph Road, but I could hear them racing up and down Telegraph Road. If I can hear them as a resident, why aren't the police there ticketing these people going through six and eight gears on Telegraph Road? And I could hear it from where I'm at. We should stop this racing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baydun.
Thank you so much for the question. And just to put it out there, so since being on the council, one other thing that I was able to do was help enforce getting more stop signs within our city, within the neighborhoods. Just in my neighborhood, actually, where a state trooper lives right at the corner of Midway and Amboy, cars can go up to 40 to 50 miles because the flow of traffic was so easy, and you didn't have to stop for at least almost a half a mile. So I was able to work with our police and fire and get some stop signs right on Wilson, right on Annapolis Road, and some on Amboy and Midway. But I've also been working so that we can have more lights on Ford Road, since it's so fast, and turning actually left onto Ford Road has been so difficult for so many residents. I've been in contact with MDOT to try to make things a lot more safer for residents. And obviously, with the speed bumps that I've recently been requesting from the administration to kind of slow down drag racing in the local areas. Thank you.
Mr. Abdallah.
Thank you again. In my opinion, speeding is a big problem in Dearborn Heights. And unfortunately, some people died already in our city because of speeding and reckless driving. I would recommend that the police enforce strictly the laws and have more control and more traffic officers on the streets. And not to be merciful with any of these kids. Just to give them tickets and to go and get impeded in traffic is nothing to them. There must be some kind of school you send them to, or you have their second offense, you give them points so they can feel it in their pocket, and they can feel it on their driving record.
Ms. Pryor.
Yes, unfortunately, it's an issue that we're going to be dealing with for a while. Chief Myers was at District Seven and gave us some responses as to why a lot of things can't be done. He was also at the Neighborhood Association meeting last Thursday. And the speed bumps, what we used to call sleeping policemen, would be a good idea, but in the wintertime, snow removal is difficult. So we'd have to look into one that is removable according to the season. And we are understaffed in all our departments, so we've got to work this issue as best we can. And I agree, and heavy enforcement of whatever we can to just curb this problem and get it stopped or at least slowed down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Constant.
Thank you. Yes, I think our traffic laws and ordinances need to be strictly enforced. I think the violators need to be ticketed. And when the person goes to court, they pay the fine and they endure or assess the point. So if their bad driving continues, they run the risk of losing their driver's license. I also think in our tightly packed neighborhoods and side streets that speed bumps, removable speed pumps, might be a good idea. Our police department can't be spread too thin. And there's many areas of the city where drivers are speeding, running stop signs. And if the police are out doing that, they may not be able to be responding quickly to crimes. So I think an overall approach which our chief has is a good idea.
Thank you. Mrs. LaPointe.
Yeah, so for me, this is something that I've personally experienced a bit of a revelation on. I saw an infographic on, you know, Facebook or something recently that showed the differences in fatality rates depending on the speed of the driver. So if someone is driving only 25 miles per hour, something like only 20% of people hit by a car will die. As you get up higher, even up to 30 miles per hour, it doubles. So for me, that was a little bit of a wake-up call that even speeding so much as, you know, 30 in a 25 can really make a big difference. And I think that that gets to the heart of how you actually change people. You have to get to them and educate them. And you can't just expect people to know, you know, some of these things. So I think as city council members, we need to, you know, be doing outreach, communicating, working with neighborhood groups to really try and get to the heart of what's going on.
Thank you. Our next question will first go to Mr. Baydun. And it is, "What are your plans to incorporate green infrastructure into our city? Please include the Warren Valley Project in your response."
Thank you so much. And so I know that right now that the city has a tree commission. And if you compare some parts of Dearborn Heights to Allen Park, or if you, some parts of Dearborn Heights to Dearborn, you'll see trees along the side of Ford Road that belongs to Dearborn, or and you look on the Dearborn Heights side, and there's no greenery. So I think that it is planting more trees, growing more greenery in our city within neighborhoods. I mean, I can look down some streets where there's a lot, a lot of beautiful trees, but then there are some without any trees. The second thing is the Warren Valley Golf Course. I think fixing the flooding issue, if it is a possibility, I think we need to do our due diligence over there to find ways to get the water kind of drain out a little faster and so that it's not soaking through, and we can continue to use that and bring in more revenue through the Warren Valley Golf Course. And I will go ahead and yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Abdallah.
Thank you again. We do have some kind of ordinance for trees and the cutting of trees. And anybody who wants to cut a tree must obtain some kind of permission from the city. So we need to enforce those ordinances. And we need to make sure that when somebody cut a tree, some other trees are planted someplace else. And we do have money in the city for something like that. And for the golf course, I can assure everybody it will never be solved. We want to work on keeping it green, keeping accessible to all the public, and keep it, you know, basically as much as possible, as much as possible to absorb water as much as it can.
Thank you. Ms. Pryor.
Yes, I've got an unstable internet connection, so please bear with me. I definitely have friends that live on Hanover, and everybody knows that's Hanover and Courier are well-known flood areas. We will have more green area. We will have hopefully some solutions in that area to our flooding issues. And Warren Valley is to be considered also as a possibility comparable to Edward Hines Drive, where it can be used to protect us at times. But we do need green areas established, and we want to beautify this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Constant.
Thank you. I agree with many of the other candidates that use of retention ponds, which I helped a while ago write the ordinance for on our commercial properties and including using Warren Valley and the flood plain that follows the Rouge River as a retention pond to divert and absorb the water. I think continued and aggressive use of recycling, possibly more use of our porous roads as we have at the Richard A. Young Center, so that the water doesn't end up in our storm sewers but is absorbed into the ground. Also, water absorbing plants in our fields and different areas all will help with our stormwater management and use of our green spaces like Warren Valley Golf Course. Thank you.
This is LaPointe.
So green infrastructure is probably one of the most fascinating things I've been researching. There's so many options out there. My favorites right now are things like the permeable pavements, not only for parking lots. Although I absolutely think our ordinances need to be updated so that all businesses, as they're replacing things, I think they need to look at, we need to require permeable pavements, especially in the South End. But they can also be used for driveways. We need to look into updating our ordinances for things like lawns, so that if someone wants to put in a lawn that's, you know, native plants that are going to soak up more water, we need to definitely allow for that. All those little things do add up and do make a big difference. And for Warren Valley, that's another, you know, big thing that's going to make a big impact so that we can keep the golf course as a golf course, while also, you know, having it be a sort of retention basin. But we want to be able to golf too, so we got to keep the fun.
Thank you. Mr. Pekian.
Well, first off, I didn't know that we had a green space ordinance, and I'm certainly in favor of enhancing it. Now, we do have in the present tree ordinance that if you have a tree removed voluntarily, you do have to replace the tree with a dollar amount, sometimes $2,000 or $3,000. That money is supposed to go into our tree fund, which replaces trees in the right of waste between the sidewalk and the curb. Now, if that's not being done adequately, it needs to be. The problem is you don't replace a three-foot diameter twig. You replace it with a four- or five-inch tree that's minimum 15 feet high. We're not doing that. As to the golf course, I have never been there, and I don't know what this problem is. Apparently, I think we need a retention pond that looks like a lake that's part of the design of the golf course. Go to Woodmere Cemetery.
Thank you. This will be our last question. And it will go to Mr. Abdallah first. What are your primary concerns about the quality of life in our city?
Oh, boy. I want the quality of life of our residents to be safe before anything. So they get the best service from our fire department EMS and from our police department. And I would like in the golf course to have a place for them to walk, to use the bikes. So they have access to that facility because we paid for it. I want them to use all the parks, and I want all these parks to be upgraded to help our kids enjoy their life, enjoy their parks, so they have a place to run, to enjoy, you know, their youth. So those are the things I would like to do.
Thank you. Ms. Pryor.
Yes, I think we're on the right track in many ways, especially with parks and recreation. We are improving that, and that will help the younger children. We also have programs in sports. We have things out of Kenfield where people can go do yoga. They can even study genealogy. And I want to continue improving the programs that are available for the seniors. As far as making it really good, I believe we've had a commission started recently that is giving awards for people who keep up their property. They judge the decoration of the homes at Christmas and so forth. And I hope we continue along that path. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Coniston?
Thank you. I think uh to help enhance our quality of life here in Dearborn Heights, we need responsive city government. No longer are people calling City Hall and just getting an answering machine, which is very good. Um, I think we need a responsive and quick response from our police department and our fire department. I think that uh we cannot uh no longer afford to ignore our changes that are in our community and the uh needs of our residents. Dearborn Heights population has grown since the last census. Uh, I think close to some five thousand residents. We have uh some younger families moving in, which is great. We want to have our programs uh available for our youth uh year-round and uh expanded programs for our seniors. Thank you.
Mrs. LaPointe?
Um, so our, to me, quality of life um means that everyone feels safe and happy in their home and that you have everything that you need. So as a councilperson, my priority is going to be making sure that everyone feels heard, no matter what. So make sure our seniors feel heard, make sure our youth feel heard, our families, our um everyone who's a person of color, who's LGBTQ, no matter what, you know, no matter what they identify as, whoever they are, they need to feel heard, they need to feel safe. And that's the first thing, is that we need to communicate. And that's not just speaking, it's also listening. So for me, that's the biggest thing. Um, kind of a secondary thing is is making sure that our kids have somewhere to hang out. There's nowhere for like, you know, nature to go and just be with their friends. Sometimes you can't get to the library, it's across busy roads. Um, so making sure we have places for people to be.
Thank you, Mr. Pekian.
The quality of life issue is many fascinating, there's too many issues to take a minute. One, fire and police. We have an expanding community, population has increased, the budget. When I was on the council, the budget was forty-five million. Now it's fifty-five million. We got the money. House values are going up. We have to pr- uh the fire and police, they show up perfectly. The problem is what you see. The big problem in Dearborn Heights is flooding and you can't solve that problem. That's an insolvable one and it's not one the city can do alone. That's the big issue here. Most important thing is what you see visually. The fire and police are there, they're worth, they're gold. The question is, when you drive down the street, you see garbage cans, you see blood, you see bushes that never been. That's the what thing's going to keep our property values up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baydun.
Thank you so much. And this is something that I've, you know, I've I've put together and I've man- I've been trying to manifest this. So my top priority, improving the quality of life for Dearborn Heights residents. This goal, it manifests itself in a number of ways. Rejuvenating programs and services for our seniors, improving city services while uh enhancing public safety, uh maintaining a fiscal responsibility and a and a balanced budget, cutting red tape to encourage businesses and job growth, revitalizing parks and recreation opportunities for our youth and restoring the trust and transparency transparency in our local government. Um, one other thing that I also, and just to kind of piggyback on Mrs. LaPointe a little bit, if you go to Dearborn, they have an amazing, they have amazing uh recreation over there. It's called the Dearborn Country Club. It's got a golf course. We own a golf course. Let's have a Dearborn Heights Country Club. Let kids come in there, let families bring their children in there. That's revenue, but bringing some money and uh use this and take advantage of the resources that we have here in the city of Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now time for the candidates to make a two-minute closing statement. We will begin with Ms. Breyer.
Okay, uh, first of all, um geez, I got my notes in the wrong order here. Okay. Currently, I'm on three committees, our commissions in our city. Uh, the Women's Commission, the Van Boren Corridor, and recently the Ekor's Creek Commission. I'll put in a plug. We hope to have a meeting this Wednesday. Everybody's welcome. Five-thirty at the Admin Building at three-three-three-five South Beach Daily. It is an open meeting. We're looking for people to talk and find solutions for some of our flooding issues. Um, I'm also, I have served for um four years now as the president of the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association. And um I've had a great deal of experience in problem solving, partly because of being in Girl Scouts uh in a leadership capacity, a troop organizer consultant, for twenty years' experience in that department. And I think I've I've learned some things from all of these different jobs I've had. I also am good with the problem solving. I've been on a phone line at Boeing where we have to help with problems all around the world and answer questions. And if we don't know how to answer that question, we have to find them someone who can help them. So because of the aforementioned items, I think I'm a good fit for the position of city council. Um, so I have a good standing of the problem in a uh solving and I can deal with all types of personalities. I've got a background in real estate of thirty-five years. And uh it just seems that uh the sales, that's the thirty-five years, it's taught me negotiation and compromise. And I've got one more item here, let me put the glasses back on. And I was also owner, I know business operation, I was part, well, I was. All right, I I was a part owner of a mobile home park out in the Paw Paw area. And service, customer service was important there. Thank you.
Immuted, I'm sorry.
Mr. Coniston, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've been a lifelong resident of Dearborn Heights. I chose Dearborn Heights uh to buy a home and raise my family. I've been active in community service in Dearborn Heights, Goodfellas, Kiwanis, J C's when I was young enough. I think we're facing many challenges in Dearborn Heights. Uh, we're enjoying a increase in population. We're receiving millions of dollars in stimulus money. And our property values are going up. I think these resources need to be used wisely and to continue to improve upon our city services. I think we need a response, responsive city government. I've always responded to residents who have called with a concern. I've always scrutinized the city budget that we enact each year. Um, by law, we have to pass a balanced budget. I look forward to hopefully serving again uh on the Dearborn Heights City Council and applying my education, years of experiencehip, years of experience and leadership skills uh to work with the new administration uh to help Dearborn Heights move forward in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaPointe.
So two minutes is not, um, it's not very long to to really tell you anything. It's it takes time to get to know someone. So I just want to invite anyone that, um, you know, watches this afterwards to come and find me on Facebook um or on my website to get to know me better because I could talk for hours about myself. I'm sure all of us could. So um I just, you know, want to reiterate that my priority for the city is to build trust. And that goes back to the listening, making sure that everybody feels safe and heard. Um, I'm huge about communication. That that is just really the biggest. Um, and communication, when we communicate well, we build up that trust. And in that, we also need transparency. So for me, those are the three big things. When you build up the trust, you build, increase the communication, you increase the transparency, it really just will make the the whole city better for everybody. Um, so again, I'm very active on Facebook. If anybody wants to come and find me on there, I love talking about, you know, my ideas for the city, what I think's going great, what I think needs work. Um, I'll also be streaming the city council meeting on uh my Facebook page. And I know that that has been really helpful for some people who find it hard to get to the city council meetings. So going back to our accessibility issues, um, making sure that, you know, we're we're really being able to reach out to everybody. And that's, you know, that's where my heart is, is making sure that everybody is heard, feels loved and, you know, that where you don't have to be afraid to, you know, walk down your street for any reason. So I look forward to uh being your future councilwoman, hopefully. And I hope everybody has a great day, a great week, to enjoy more of this good weather and no more rain because we do not need that around here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mc- Mr. Pekian.
Every candidate for uh council has a background to be evaluated to not only to the deliberations of the council, but to the operation of the city in general. The basic issue is, who among us has the best background, education, and experience? I have already outlined my educational background. The earning of two professional degrees, that sets me apart from most of the other candidates. As to my background, it is bearing useful to the city. I'm licensed by the state of Michigan in three separate design, physical planning, and construction disciplines. As a licensed architect, two, as a licensed professional community planner, and third, as a licensed residential builder. Backgrounds that none of my other candidates in this race have. The city does not employ these disciplines. That is necessary to be able to evaluate the work that the city requires of others that they employ, particularly hire as needed. The third issue is experience. I have been elected to the council twice before, once for a short term on a special election and once for a consecutive full four-year term, for a total of five plus, just six years ago. None of the present challenger candidates for office have ever been elected to the council to have been appointed. I know what the council can do, what the council can't do, what it should not do, and possibly what it might do in the future. I do not promise things that. I do not promise things that I know the city cannot do. Problem that cannot do alone, especially in the South End, flooding issues.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mr. Baydun?
Thank you so much, guys. I want to first and foremost start off by thanking the League of Woman Voters for hosting this forum today. Thank you to all the candidates for coming out here today. I wishing you guys all the best. And if it's made for me, it's made for me. And may fate bring us here altogether. I want to first start off by saying, uh, so my name is Mo Baydun and I am running to retain my seat on the Dearborn Heights City Council. After being appointed to the council in January of twenty-twenty-one, I hope to earn your support in November as I seek to continue fighting on behalf of the residents like you. I am so proud to live and work in the community in addition to being a proud husband to Dr. Leila Baydun and a new father to my beautiful son. I'm a small business owner in the Dear- in the city of Dearborn Heights. I'm also a Wayne County Sheriff Reserve Officer. My unique background and deeply local roots, coupled with your support and feedback, will allow me to continue bringing a fresh perspective, enthusiasm, and outside-of-the-box thinking to our city council. I'll be going door-to-door again soon to meet with residents and listen to your concerns. I am heartened to live in a city filled with hard work and resilient residents. I'm committed to serving with integrity, transparency, and earn your cu- your vote on November second. I'm not afraid to go above and beyond to bring additional resources to Dearborn Heights so that we can all enjoy a higher quality of life. And I'm committed to working hand-in-hand with residents like you to move in the right direction. I am humbly asking you for your support and for you to vote for me on November second. I am honored and to have already been endorsed by our Dearborn Heights Police and Fire, our local two-ninety-nine Teamsters, and the Carpenters. I am asking uh the residents at home who have also already received their absentee ballot to go with Mo in Movember. God bless, and I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Abdal-Hak.
Uh, I thank the League of Woman Voter again for inviting me. I just want to go over my experience. I am an electrical engineer with a diploma in business management and co-owner of a jewelry business for the last twenty-six years in the city of Dearborn. I have been involved since I came to Dearborn Heights in the Crestwood uh schools very much. And I chaired the so- the committee which passed thirty-five million dollars bond for the schools. And uh I was appointed by late Mayor Palatko to the zoning board for five years. And I was appointed the chairman of the Housing Commission. Then I was appointed last year for four months as the treasurer, uh interim, interim treasurer for the city of Dearborn Heights. Then I was appointed on January twenty-sixth with Mr. Baydun to fill the seat of our uh mayor, Bill Bazzi. And I am running to retain the seat. And I hope that I gain the confidence of the residents that they will give me their trust and vote on November second. I uh I have uncovered the overcharge of six-point-eight million dollars on the C S O project to the residents and uncovered and challenged the late mayor on the misuse of the bank money of one-point-four million dollars. I have excellent knowledge of the budget because of my position as treasurer for four months. And I consider this city my home. And it is basically, I treat Dearborn Heights like a piece of diamond which is one of the kind.
Thank you. So I want to remind our listeners that we have candidates from two races here tonight. And I want to remind you that six names will be on the November second general election ballot for the four-year full-term Dearborn Heights City Council race. You may vote up to four candidates and their names are Zohair Abdal-Hak, Hassan M. Ahmad, Nancy Breyer, Robert Coniston, look, Rachel LaPointe, and Tom Wensel. And there are two candidate names that will be on the November second general election ballot for the two-year partial term for Dearborn Heights City Council race. And you may vote for one. Their names are Ned Pekian and Mo Baydun. Candidates, we appreciate the commitment it takes to run for office. And we would like to thank you for your participation. The forum has now ended. The polls will be open on Tuesday, November second, from seven AM to eight PM. Absentee ballots are also available from the clerk, city clerk's office for any reason. Please visit votefouroneone.org and my.gov for my.gov forward slash vote for additional information about the candidates and your ballot. Please remember to vote. Every vote makes a difference, especially in a local election. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Good night.